I will call the meeting to order, and I would ask if you're stand if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to go a little out of order for the moment because I'm going to go right to the superintendent's report just very briefly. Mr. Lynch.
Yes, Mr. Young, members of the committee. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to invite Derek Thompson down to the podium for a moment, and along with some friends that he brought along. He's become personal friends with him, but they're also good friends of the district. It is our local Rotary Club and they sponsor the Rotary Raise Program. Mr. Thompson, welcome.
Thank you. I didn't really have any remarks prepared tonight, but just excited to be able to be here tonight just to publicly acknowledge the Rotary for all their work. I think we're on five years completed of the Rotary Raise. So the Rotary has donated almost $12,000 to us every year. We've run an innovative after-school tutoring program, intensive program, 16 weeks where we're working with fourth and fifth graders after school, targeting kids who have had low growth and low achievement in MCAS. Roughly, our growth numbers are averaging over 60. So we've had years where our average growth percentiles are in the 70s. We've had them over 60. They've always been over 60. Typical growth numbers for kids are between 40 to 60. So it's not normal to see kids with growth above 60, and we've been averaging that with all the kids. We have some unbelievable success stories of kids in the Rotary. I know that folks on the Rotary have heard from kids later that we've worked with years ago. So it's just been an incredible program. It's been a real difference maker for us. We're working with kids at both Mary Kay Good and HBB. We work with around 50 kids every year, usually a few more than that because the teachers will take in a couple extras. And it's just been an enormously successful program, and I'm just glad we get to publicly acknowledge and say thank you for the donation and the hard work of the Rotary.
And Mr. Thompson, if I might, the MCAS, Next Generation MCAS specifically identifies subgroups and specifically rewards schools for how well they do with some subgroups. We know we're going to have certain students who do extremely well in the MCAS every year. But it's that lower subgroup, the subgroup you've identified, that if we can actually quantify substantial growth in that area, the school is recognized, and your school has been recognized in that area.
Yeah, we have. So HBB was a Level III school for our performance in special ed. We were in the bottom 20th percentile for a while. Some of you that have been here for a while heard my disagreements with some of those numbers for a while. We are in a much better place with that. We're in a great place with that. But really, it's been a combination of efforts, this being one of them, in targeting those kids that have struggled and finding outside-the-box ways to target and help those kids and move them forward. And this is one of those ways. So it's been a huge help, and it's going to be even more important going forward. The new MCAS, half of our accountability, starting this year, is rooted in our ability to move our bottom 25% of our kids. So programs like this go a really long way. They're helpful. They're beneficial for the community, for the kids, for everything, the level of the school district and our determination, so.
So Mr. Chair, on behalf of a grateful school district, we certainly thank the local Rotary and their representatives who are here tonight. They have made a difference, and it's been a great partnership and collaboration through five years, and hopefully it will continue on down the road. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matthew, if you'd like to, you're more than welcome to say a few syllables.
If I may introduce who's here tonight.
What quiet, yeah, come on down.
Thank you very much. First of all, my name is Matthew Bruce. I'm the current and presiding president of the local club, Middleborough. And who we have tonight is a past president, Sue Ocalito. We have Willie Dufilly, you might recognize from town. We have Bob Sekay, who you also might recognize from town, business owner, and not to miss my wife, lovely wife, Emma, and my son, Will. And I want to also thank you. It's been a great several years doing this program. The Rotary Club is, we have various charitable events throughout the year to try to raise funds for the REAP program, one of which is the television auction, you probably have seen advertised, and that's been a great success for the club. And we're always looking for new and creative ways of raising funds to expand the program. We would like to see it expanded because we have seen through the great work of Derek Thompson, he's been extraordinary, right from the beginning. When we first proposed this program, you came right up to me that day initially, and you've championed the program ever since, so thank you for that. But we really would like to see this continue and through the endeavor and the work of all these great Rotarians. So.
If I may, I remember you coming here, I was sitting on this board when you first came here to present this, and it was going to be, we're just going to try it first, see what happens.
Yes, yes.
And it started out as a small little idea, and it's grown into what it is today. And we're seeing, we're seeing this huge benefit at this point for the work that you guys do, beyond everything else you do outside of this, what you do for our students, what you do for our community, and I'm thankful because I see you more than a few times throughout the year, which is.
Yeah, different venues.
Different, different venues, and I just think it's wonderful what you guys do and what you do in your other life. I see you at the places as well, so I see everyone. But I remember how excited I was when Willie mentioned it to me and said, wait till you see what's coming. And then you came in and presented it five years ago. It just seems like yesterday, so I'm just so happy that we're able to continue with this.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And we're always certainly looking for Rotarians, so. Anyone that would like to join our club, it's a very dynamic club, great group of people. We meet, currently we're meeting on Wednesday evenings at the local fireside restaurant at 6:00 PM, so all are welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to step back on the agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Owen for a student report.
Is that possible for the local newspaper? Give a little publicity.
So you're forcing your son to do work now? He doesn't have school till, for a couple of weeks.
Yes, you are. Are you ready, Brian, or Paul?
I'm ready. No problem. The beginning of the school year is right around the corner, and students are getting ready for the new year. Tuesday and yesterday served as the Start Strong Orientation Days for the class of 2022. The class was introduced to their first Energizers toward the Middleborough High School, got their schedules, and bonded as a class over roller skating. Over 160 of the 200 students attended the program for the largest attendance ever. In addition, we had over 140 orientation leaders from the sophomore, junior, and senior classes. All in all, this was a great success, and I'm looking forward to the new year with the class of 2022. The fall sports season has started up, and teams are gearing up for their first games. We hope to replicate the successes of last fall season and to see many fellow Sachems in the sands. And I just came from the Student Council's first MASC, which is the state program, and NASC, which is the national program, idea sharing meeting. Students who were delegates at these conferences came to the school, ate some pizza, and shared ideas that they wanted to implement in the coming year. I saw a lot of fresh ideas that have made me even more excited for the coming year. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Owen? Owen, we know you start your senior year this year, and we appreciate your time spent, and we look forward to spending your senior year with you here in the board, so thank you. I did jump over public comment. Did anyone wish to make any comment not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I'll move on. Any report from school community members? Mr. Stevens.
So my daughter is a freshman this year, and she attended the Start Strong. And I got to say, it's just so impressive. We drove up, and they were all, the upperclassmen were lining the street, lining the sidewalks. She was a little intimidated. She was like, what's going on? But, you know, it's so impressive that so many of the students gave up, you know, significant portion of time to prepare and do their, you know, 140 kids giving their time is really impressive, so kudos to those, a great program. She feels a lot better. She's got her device already working, you know, so that's good to see. So very happy with that program.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I do want to make one thing to the board that last night, the superintendent and I, along with Adam Pelletier, attended the cable meeting. We had a very productive meeting with the members of the cable committee. We outlined some of the, if there were to be changes, and this is a proposal that was going up, that how it would affect us and how we would need, especially as we talked about before, we have some contractual language that we need to look at and everything like that. And so I spoke to the chair, and I emailed the chair this morning again, and he said again that it was a proposed potential. It wasn't anything in stone. And if there was to be anything moving forward, they were going to spend some time on it for a couple of months, and then they may get back or ask either myself or me to send over a little subcommittee to work with them and have some conversations. But I didn't want people to know about that. Did you have anything?
I would say that Dr. Gates and Sean Cilio also attended the meeting, and the concerns were around a proposal that we sort of thought was something that we were going to vote on last night, I think, was my impression. It became clear from the chair of the Permanent Cable Committee that this was something they were just pondering as a possibility, and we would have input in that process. And they also pointed out the fact that ultimately, any of these changes in the policies would have to be approved also by the Selectmen at some point in the near future. So I'm glad we were able to go. I'm glad we were able to support Mr. Pelletier in his thoughts regarding educational television and the devotion and the work he's done for it. And I look towards the future of this agreement and making sure that we have that delineation between public, government, and educational television in this community.
I should also mention too, as we discussed at our last meeting, there's a series of focus groups coming up for cables. The sign up for that is actually due next week, I believe, and so you can go to the town website, you can go to cable website if you could sign up if you want to. I've already signed up for the focus group on the educational channel, so I would ask anybody who's interested to please do that.
Chair.
Yes.
That educational one, it will be Thursday, September 6th, from 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM at the Selectmen's Meeting Room in 10 Nickerson Avenue in Middleborough. I believe that if you couldn't attend that one, if you go to another one, they will still take your input because the day before, they have one at 2:00 in the afternoon and then one at 6:00 at night on the Wednesday, the 5th. So the educational one specifically is the Thursday, the 6th, from 3:30 to 5:30. But be heard. I mean, you're paying a tax right now on your cable TV portion of your bills, and that goes to a fund that helps fund this piece. But also, what you want to see on the educational channel is your chance to say what you'd like to see on it. And I like seeing what we see on it right now.
Yes, Mr. Givernone, it's about PEG access, which is the access to our public channels, and one is public, there's educational, and there's governmental. So each of those three categories will be vetted through the community in anticipation of going to negotiations with both Verizon and Comcast for future contracts and future relationships with the town.
And Mr. Chair, currently the tax is two, I'm sorry, the fee is, the PEG fee is 2.5% of your cable TV bill.
Yeah.
So you may, not your whole bundle, but just the cable TV part. So if you bundle your stuff, it is broken out in pieces. You can look it up. And it's usually in the bottom section of fees where there's like, where did all this money go? But you have your 911 fees in PEG access, so for someone, I pay quite a bit annually on that fee for what I have in my household. I'd like to have a say in it.
Any other comments by board members? I do want to mention one thing that I think is important, and I don't think we can emphasize it enough, is September 4th is Primary Election Day. The schools will not be open. That's the Tuesday after, for students, it will not be open for students. It's the Tuesday after Labor Day. It's sort of an unusual circumstance for us. But again, the school day starts, the school year starts Wednesday, the 5th, not Tuesday, the 4th, so.
And for kindergarteners, the day after, and for preschool, it's the Monday following.
And then Mr. Cutino notified the superintendent and I that he wouldn't be here tonight, so there's no MEA report.
No, he could not make it tonight, unfortunately, but I would like to report out to the committee that he, myself, and Mrs. Lazarovich, Kate Lazarovich, the vice president of the association, did have a chance to sit down and have a kickoff meeting for the year to talk about some things that we can do together. They also noted to the committee that they would like to put an issue in abeyance for the period of time until such time as negotiations have been completed during this year. So that matter that we had spoken of has been placed in abeyance for the period of time.
That being everything, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you very much. I would like to invite down to the podium a couple of ladies from the community who've done a great deal of work with the Sharp program, and they'd like to come down and say hello and give us a little report. I'd like to ask Joanne Babbin and Sedalia Pina to come on down. And I believe they also have some audio visuals.
Oh.
And some friends. And displays. So welcome, ladies. This is the Sharp program. It's a two-week program in the summer that's been, I can't tell you the number of years, but I'm guessing it's about 20?
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six. So Joanne, why don't you take it away?
This is the 26th year of Sharp. This year, we had 114 kids come and participate, and we had some scholarships from Mary Kay Good and MECC and HBB sponsor some kids, so if they couldn't go, they were able to go. I worked with Make Work to get the kids. HBB had given us five scholarships. We only ended up using four of them, so I refunded them back, hopefully to use it next year. Of the 114 kids, 103 were for grades one through six, and then I opened last year a STEAM program that Sedalia has run, and she had 11 students that were grades sixth to eighth. I opened it up because when the kids finished Sharp, they were all, they were sad. They were like, oh, now what are we going to do with our kids? So I was like, well, we'll try it. And I tried it last year. We had 12 students last year, 11 this year. Let's see. So at the, at the Sharp, we had a wake-up call. We had Channel 5 news come in, not come in, we videotaped it, and then we sent it to the news. So the kids were on the news. They were very excited about being on television. And then I also had a woman, her name is Laura Zawitt, come in, and she talked about, it's called Regan's Act of Kindness, and they paint rocks. It's for a little girl. She had been hit by a car, so her family wants to do kind things, so the T-shirt says, be kind. So the kids, after the program, I had them stay out there, and I had collected rocks for weeks before, and they came and just painted kindness rocks, and they took them home, and they're supposed to be around town. So if you see a rock, it could be one that they painted. And then Sedalia was going to talk more about the STEAM part of it this year, since Sharp's been around forever.
Okay. Is this, is this the one for you? Well, thank you for Superintendent Lynch and Cherry Young and the rest of the members. Thank you for allowing us to be on your agenda tonight, and thank you for letting us share Sharp and especially STEAM, which I am passionate about. So my objectives, and I have, I'm sorry, Corinne and Joanna with us today, two of the students that were in my class. So my objectives for Sharp with students is to introduce STEM technology, or in this case, STEAM, because I have to add art. The ideas and concepts, and ask the students through experiential learning, collaboration, and working through the creative process to find ways to be problem solvers. My classes are very loosely structured, I guess, because for me, it's more important that the students lead the exploration. So it's fluid. It can change. It can move. What I love most about what I do in STEAM is if students love something that they've been introduced to, they work at it for days. And sometimes something's not so popular, and we put it away and move on. So my objectives are to engage students. I try to build about 10 lesson plans for the eight days, and sometimes those lesson plans are visited every day. For example, last year, a very simple potential kinetic energy lesson turned into must-do every day. Right, girls? Joanna was in my class last year, and we were making kinetic stars for two weeks. And they loved it so much that they turned the kinetic star idea into kinetic snakes, and they each got a little bundle of craft sticks so that they could explore some more at home. And the goals that I have when I teach STEAM is really to build curiosity with students so that their brains start thinking about STEAM all the time and STEM at the basic. And one of the things that I love most about is then when they take those ideas and make them their own. And one of my favorite things as an educator, generally speaking, is when they take ideas that they learn in the classroom, and then I hear them or find out that they're doing them at home or talking about them, or they're exploring other ways to problem solve using some of those ideas that we visited during the STEAM class. I think that makes for a successful student, and I can't be more proud as an educator when that happens. So this year, in STEAM, I'll just go through really quickly some of the stuff that we did. We hatched quail. We talked about life science and reproduction, and we incubated quail eggs, and they took all eight days, the two weeks, because our classroom was very cold, and that messes with the incubation of the eggs, which was unexpected. Our class sometimes was 58 degrees, so that does not make for a very happy incubation. So the quails finally did hatch. They hatched the last day, and some of the students got to take those little chicks home with them, and they're raising them today. So that was fun. For engineering, we talked about egg strength in a chicken egg. So as fragile as an egg is, it's also super crazy strong at the ends. And we challenged the kids to try to break an egg, just using two fingers, and they couldn't do it, and I think that surprised a lot of them. We took that lesson, and we talked about brain injury and concussion, and we used an egg to simulate what happens in your head. So the kids were challenged with building a helmet out of recycled materials. They had to work with some parameters, which was the helmet had to be removable, just like a helmet you would use in sports or on a bike or motorcycle. And they had to find ways to protect their brain egg. And we had three tests that they had to get through. If they passed the first test, they moved on to the second test. And it was to try to simulate the best that we could in that type of class setting, like an accident or an injury by impact. And I think three, three kids passed the test, all three tests, and they were intense. We dropped heavy textbooks on the eggs. We threw them against a tree outside. So, and then we talked about the lulls of the brain and how that would affect the eggs when they cracked in relation to what would happen to your brain if you got into an accident or a concussion. We brought back geocaching from last year's STEAM, which was very popular. We weren't very successful with our geocaching trip this year because we couldn't find the caches. Geocaching, unfortunately, is as successful as the respect for the boxes out in the woods. And sometimes if they're taken or misplaced, then, but we had a chance to talk about GIS and GPS and coordinates. And last year, our students created a box that we built and hid in the woods, registered with the geocaching website. It was taken, unfortunately, but we, as a group, decided that we were going to replace the box and try again. So that was fun. It was a fun day, and we got a chance to get some exercise. We had a forensic science unit where we talked about fingerprinting and the science behind using fingerprint technology to solve a crime. We had a special guest, a Middleborough High School alum, Mr. Adam Hannah, who is also had interns with the police department, and he shared his knowledge about not just fingerprinting and forensic science, but he was able to share with the students his choice in major as he goes off to Westfield State as a criminal science student, which really excited some of the kids in the classroom as they were sort of questioning and had questions for him about that type of study. Let's see. We also did fun things like Free Art Day. We built with recycled materials. We had big buildings going. We did a tie-dye unit for chemistry art, which was sort of a fun lighter day. And then we had a day of technology, or a couple of days, three or four days, I guess, where we introduced virtual reality using smartphone technology. So there's a really cool app that's called Google Cardboard. There's many apps, but I introduced Google Cardboard to the students, and they got a chance to not only see what virtual reality technology looks like, but they got a chance to keep and take home a Google Glass, is what it's called. Makey Makeys is this really powerful, fun tool. I call it a tool because it's just limitless what you could do. That was borrowed from a teacher friend who I will talk about. Her classroom had 12 of them or 18 of them. So each student got a chance, as we borrowed those boxes. We bought this for the Sharp program, so we'll keep that in-house for Sharp. But we got to borrow these eight Makey Makeys, so kids all got a chance to try it. And it's built on the concept of circuitry. And the kids got to, so circuitry connected to the Makey Makey device allows, with HTML language and coding, to replace objects for the keyboard. So keys on the keyboard functions are replaced with bananas or dishes of water or Play-Doh. I introduced the concept and then allowed the kids to choose what was conductive to make that circuit close. And they learned that water is conductive. They even learned that using graphite, when the Makey Makey was connected to a line of graphite, it would mimic a keyboard stroke. That was a fun day. And this tool is, like I said, limitless. That's from the Makey Wakey website. And we did green screen technology using the software Do Ink. And we did green screen technology, using the software Do Ink and some Apple iPads that I again borrowed. We created commercials, video, photos, and manipulated backgrounds. And maybe Corinne can come up and show us? We have a video to share, too.
Welcome.
Green screen was my favorite thing that we did in STEAM. We took a lot of pictures and everybody got to choose what background they wanted. We did some at Disney World. Me and a few of other students made a news video pretending to be news reporters and we were reporting on what we did in STEAM.
Welcome back to Middleborough News. Today, we're filming from STEAM at Middleborough Sharp Program.
Today, they're working on kinetic stars.
Kinetic stars is weaving popsicle sticks back and forth to make something to throw it at a wall. We also have been doing VR. Oh, here comes one of our VR people now, very lost.
Wait, I should fly.
Well, VR is something really fun. And in 20 minutes, we will be filming, it'll be brought to you by Ryan, filming the kinetic stars getting thrown at the wall.
There might be a kinetic explosion.
It'll be live. Have a nice day.
What?
Goodbye. To Middleborough News. Today, we are in the steam room at Middleborough Sharp Program and Ryan Fahey will be telling you what the kids have been doing live today.
Today, the kids are making kinetic stars. Here's Gregory who are doing kinetic star throws. They're passing kinetic explosions. But luckily, our breads are protected by the compass, but the quails don't have it. We also were geopassions looking for ocean trash in our town I share.
This livestream was brought to you by Do Ink Green Screen Technology. This is Corinne Horstman.
And Joanna Perilla.
Signing off. Thank you, Emma Pina Doherty, for filming this. Obviously, we've learned that Middleborough STEAM has had a fun and educational week at the Middleborough Sharp Program. We also learned that they've been reading a book called Seed Folks and they've learned to do community service and ignore stereotypes. They also learned about an ocean trash unit that Joanna will talk about. Hi, guys.
How long does it take for a plastic bottle or a plastic bag to break down?
Well, your average plastic bottle or plastic bag could take up to 1,000 years to disintegrate. And there are much better ways to pack your snack and it's very easy to find a better use and a better way to pack your snacks for the environment.
I think I want to buy something better than a plastic bag.
I hope that you guys sign up for STEAM next year because we'll do, we'll be doing much more fun stuff. Have a nice day, signing off.
Kinetic star thrower.
The green screen was definitely everybody's favorite. We used it every day that we were in STEAM and we made lots of cool videos and photos using that. And I will definitely sign up for STEAM again next year and the year after that.
That's great.
Thank you, Corinne. Thank you. Okay, so lastly, I think the only thing left to talk about is probably my two favorite activities or lessons that we did. Ocean trash was mentioned in the STEAM video. And so the ocean trash lesson that we had planned was really inspired by a young person by the name of Boyan Slatt. He started very young, probably, you know, middle school age. He was bothered by what was happening in the Pacific Ocean, which we call the Great Pacific Ocean Patch of Trash, garbage patch. There are two subtropical convection zones that are, for lack of a better word, swirling trash into big piles. And he's working to try to clean that up. So he's created with all of the STEAM that you could possibly imagine, large inflatable booms that will pull across the ocean to collect some of that garbage. So we talked to the students about better ways to handle trash, better ways to perhaps not even introduce plastic. So the kids got a chance to look up, research how long some of this trash lasts in the ocean, and they created that poster. Joanna, do you want to jump up there and talk about it?
Sure.
Okay. You just talk loud enough and I'll help you hold it. Okay.
So I essentially led the ocean trash poster and we had everyone pick one item of trash to essentially research. And they had to tell us how long it takes to disintegrate in a regular landfill and then how long it takes in the ocean. And one of the most surprising ones that I learned was actually bubble wrap. And it has not been invented long enough to know how long it disintegrates. So that one I found very surprising. And then there were a couple very interesting photos there. Like there's one of a turtle and there is a soda holder attached to it and it couldn't grow through it. So it grew around it. And I thought that was kind of scary because animals shouldn't be treated like that. So I thought it was very interesting to learn what we as humans are doing to our environment and that the world survived a whole lot better without us.
So the students were surprised. I think for the most part, a lot of that plastic, especially the newer plastic, just not enough data to tell us how long that would take to disintegrate in the ocean. But for example, a Ziploc bag is 400 to 600 years. And Ziploc bags are one of those really easy choices that you can make. It's a single-use plastic. You use it once and you throw it out and there's so many other ways to package a sandwich. So the poster was designed to introduce technology that Boyan Slatt is trying to clean up the ocean with. But it was also a project that we hope to bring awareness to students. The poster is going to be installed somewhere here at Nichols for a few weeks. And then I've been asked to share it at the Born Visitor Center for the Canal, where we see trash all the time near the ocean. The last favorite thing of mine, probably not a very obvious STEAM or STEM concept, this is a book called Seed Folks by Paul Fleishman. It's one of my favorite teaching tools. And the book is so powerful and so impacting that I feel like every time I'm with a group of students, I need to share it. I was able to sneak it in and sort of justify the fact that it's STEM-related because it's about gardening. And the concept of the story is a group of people get together and clean up a parking lot full of trash in a city in Ohio and turn it into a garden. But the book really is about community, it's about cultural differences. And I think it's a celebration of people coming together, sharing their culture and diversity and breaking down stereotypes. And with the climate that we have in the media right now, I felt like it was important to share with students. And I try to every time I get a chance. It also tells a story that we have more than our single story to share and we have many things, talents that are multifaceted, that we can provide and give to the community. And I reminded the kids every day, there's content in the book that characters have to rise to the occasion and be bold and stick up for people that don't have voices to advocate for themselves. So it's really a book about making changes and doing great things for other people. So we read this book probably every morning as sort of a warm-up. And then we got through most of the book, so the kids really got invested in the characters. And each character weaves their story into the next character. And then the students got each a copy of the book to take home and share with their families. And hopefully, they finish reading the book. So that's what we did this year.
Wow. How long's the program? Six months? Wow.
It's only eight days. Yeah, but the kids in my STEAM class are with me for the whole time. They don't switch classes. So they have snack with me together and we all kind of hang out for three hours and really get to know each other. Next year, I have tons of new ideas. This head is full of them. We're going to tackle earth projections and global model making. Hopefully, we can do plaster casting if I have students brave enough to put plaster on their face. I'd love to do a unit about fabrication. We're going to do some more GIS and GPS with mapping. We can actually map our footsteps and create a map of Middleborough or parts of Middleborough. Food science with verification. Nature trail discovery boxes I would love to build for the Pratt Farm. So that's a nice community project. And I have an expert that's willing to come in and talk to us about honeybees. And one more community project that, it's not really a Sharp lesson or a STEAM lesson, but maybe Sharp could get all of the students involved in can collecting for Oak Point. My son was able to take advantage of a scholarship that he was offered this year because of cans, which I think is just remarkable and we're so grateful to the friends at Oak Point. So it's our way of giving back, looking ahead five years from now. I would love to be able to expand STEAM. Joanna and I have talked about doing that and do more for next year. This year, I was able to borrow this technology, the Makey Makeys, the green screen, the iPads. It's expensive equipment. We don't have it here in Middleborough, but Toby Eugenio is a STEAM teacher at a small school in New Bedford. And the OSS School is able to have that equipment. So I think somehow Middleborough can find a way to do it. We're pretty good at writing a grant, so I'm willing to do that. I think teachers are very good at borrowing and asking for gifts. So we'll find a way if I have the support of the school committee and parents to maybe pull some resources together and have all of this equipment in-house with Sharp so that more students can take advantage of using the type of technology that our students got to this year in STEAM. I guess that's probably just about it. One other thing I have as an idea for maybe next year, if we can pull it off, is to create a Sharp Maker Studio. So that would be offered, just like we did the Rocks Project this year, like a couple of hours one day after school. And a maker studio is very easy to put together. I mean, it's cool if we can have this technology to add to it. But a maker studio can just be parents saving recycled materials and giving students a chance to glue, build, construct, and make. So that's sort of outward dreams. I think it's so important to emphasize STEAM at as young as an age as we can and start early. It's everywhere and STEAM careers are everywhere. So the sooner we get students to start thinking about STEAM, the more exposure they have, then they start building those skills with STEAM activities in the classroom. And maybe future leaders and innovators will follow.
Thank you all very much for coming tonight presenting the Sharp Program. Certainly very interesting. I noticed Mr. Oakley over there is chomping at the bit to talk about some of the things he's doing in town to bring these innovative materials into the town and set up a lab. And I would also mention that in the vision statement for the new high school and the building of the new high school, there is an innovation center in the school that includes a steam wing, a maker space, a fabrication lab. And that is the future. And we certainly have the robotics here at the Nichols Middle School and there's a lot of opportunities within the school system. But certainly encourage any grant writing you might do that would help the system, that's no doubt about it. So any of the committee have any questions for our guests?
Mr. Chair, when is the next time that it'll be running this program?
We do it every summer.
Every summer, the two weeks after the Fourth of July.
Okay. Well, by next summer, I'd be happy to let you guys borrow some 3D printers if you're into that idea.
That would be great. Yeah, thank you.
I do want to ask one thing.
Yes.
And it regards the poster. And I think putting up the poster here is great and I know you talked about bringing it to, but I also think it'd be great if you brought it back at the end of the year. Because I think when kids are determining whether or not to go to Sharp, to have these things in the school at that time so they sort of remember, hey, this is what the kids did and were able to do, I think that would be a big help. And so if we could bring that stuff back and maybe even put some of the videos that you made on our website, like towards the end of the year, so that people can see what Sharp is and know what Sharp's about, I think that would be fantastic, too.
Okay, consider it done.
I mean, that's, it's a great opportunity and I think as these young ladies talk it up, it certainly is something that will become more popular, certainly. And it sounds like your room is kind of cold, so we can talk to the facilities about that. But Mrs. Babbin insists on, she likes the air conditioning, so that's why she likes to have it in the school. But, you know, to be successful, the STEAM program has to be in Berkeley and, I'm just kidding, Mrs. Babbin. But thank you very much and thank you ladies, young ladies especially.
Thank you.
It's important that you are able to display and talk about what you've done, so it's great. So, Mr. Chair, again, with tonight's theme being sort of a summary of the summer, if you will, I'd like to invite Carolyn Lyons, our PPS Director, and Patricia Ferretti, who is our Extended School Year Program Director, down to the table to talk about the Extended School Year Program. As you know, we have what's called an ESY, or Extended School Year Program, that basically gives us an opportunity to extend the learning through the summer, especially with those children with special needs. And Carolyn and Trish are here to talk about it. So I'll let you have a seat and I would certainly welcome you ladies. Trish, if you could, you could turn that mic around and the one, or the one that's on the speaker there, and there you go. So you're not passing the mic back and forth. Awesome. Well, welcome ladies, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. Okay, so what I'm going to do is give you a little brief overview of what Extended School Year services are and then talk a little bit about the changes that we've made with this program over the last two years. And then I'm going to let Mrs. Ferretti talk about her experience with the program. So Extended School Year Services are additional services that the district must provide for students when a child's team determines on an individual basis that they need those services to receive a free and appropriate public education. That occurs at a yearly annual meeting. And the team reviews data and kind of looks at how the student has been making progress. And they look at report cards and MCAS performance and progress notes, informal assessments. They look at kind of all areas, including social and emotional growth, to determine whether or not a student is maintaining their current levels of performance. When they have data to suggest that the students aren't and they're experiencing what's known as substantial regression of skills, then the student could qualify for these Extended School Year Services. In the grand scheme of percentage, it's not the majority of special ed students. We're right around 600 here in Middleborough and the percentage is not high. I'll let, you know, Trish to talk a little bit more about the specifics of numbers of students. So in any event, while all students experience some form of regression, regression, at the beginning of the school year, we already account for that.
beginning of the school year, we already account for that. The curriculum spirals back in those early months. But for a small percentage of students, they're not able to recoup those lost skills within that set period of time. So we ultimately solicit and collect data after the summer, at those natural breaks in the school year, so after December, after February, and then after April. And we look, did this student regain those skills as they come back? Did it take longer? How much longer? And what discrete skills were lost? So that's kind of what goes into tabulating who gets Extended School Year Services. So like any other specialized program, Middleborough offers its own Extended School Year Program. It is four days a week, four full days a week, over six weeks over the summer. We have selected to stagger it kind of right in the middle, so there's a bit of a break after school gets out, although depending on when we get out in June. And then, there's a small break this period of time, actually. It just ended on last Friday, last Thursday. It doesn't run on Friday. So, in terms of the program, it is a full academic program from nine to one. It includes both breakfast and lunch, with thanks to Rebecca Bagnell, who's able to secure that for us. A full complement of related services, which includes occupational therapy, speech, physical therapy. We have a full-time school adjustment counselor devoted to the program, full-time nurse, and there's even BCBA oversight, our board certified behavior analyst, to help us out with behavior plans and anything else that might kind of crop up. Our program is divided into full program, so there are children who attend that. And then, we have tutoring program as well, which is for students who experience that regression of skills in discrete areas like ELA-based skills, reading, written language, or math. Or in some cases, both. So we run kind of two separate programs. We have made changes to remain competitive, because unsurprisingly, like many programs, if we aren't offering a program that is appropriate, then families will solicit that program elsewhere and it costs the district more. So it has behooved us all to remain competitive and current. So what I wanted to talk to you was a little bit about what I mean by that and give you a little bit of the history of the ESY in Middleborough. So the program's been in existence for years, because this is not a new obligation, so that's kind of been around for a long time. And for a long time, the program was at the Memorial Early Childhood Center. And it involved use of the town pool and it kind of functioned that way for a long period of time. Several years ago, a couple of directors ago, the program was moved to here at the John C. Nichols School. And the reason it was moved was to increase the academic focus of the program. The tricky part being, you know, it is a summer program. So you have to strike that really fine balance between keeping these kids engaged and happy because it is summer and they fully understand that their friends are outside and, you know, playing, doing anything else. And being rigorous enough to prevent that regression of skills. So, you know, you can't go too far into the rigor and retain that excitement. And you don't want to go too far into the recreation because now you're not running an academic program. So it's kind of this delicate balance. So two summers ago, I instituted a series of changes. And the first thing I did was move it back to the Memorial Early Childhood Center. And I didn't do it in a vacuum. I vetted it through my M-PAC, my Middleborough Parent Advisory Council, Special Ed Administration, Superintendent, and people who had previously worked in the program. So I felt confident in moving it back to the MECC because of its location primarily. It's centrally located near community-based resources. That costs very little, if anything, for us to go visit. It gives kids access to things like the police station, the fire department, well, the police station's moving now, but back when it was moved, it was there. The post office, there's a town hall, I mean, everything is in the center of town and MECC's actually in the heart of that area. The equipment and play structures were actually more appropriate at the MECC than here at the Nichols. That was something that we experienced in the move here. While it suited our secondary students, the overwhelming majority of our population is actually younger. So, and it became quite an issue with little, little legs using the bathrooms here and everything else. It's easier to be a larger person in a smaller setting than a too-small person in a larger setting. So we had that experience. And staffing had become an issue. It was actually really hard to staff the program. There wasn't, there was not overflowing interest when it was here at the Nichols. So the first thing I did was make that change. The next thing I did was break our pre-K session into two sessions. Right now, our pre-K program runs in two sessions, AM session, PM session. With that not being broken out, ultimately, it led to over-servicing. And more importantly, it didn't mimic what these kids were getting during the school year. So we've broken it into two sessions now. And lastly, I hired an ESY coordinator who's sitting with me today. Previously, this program had been filled by sitting special education administrators. And what I'll say is that when I solicited a new coordinator, I was looking for someone that could bring fresh eyes to the program. And, you know, Ms. Tricia Ferretti is a sitting pre-K teacher here in our district. She has a ton of experience with early childhood. She is fresh to administration here in Middleborough, but not fresh to administration or the skills that go along with it. And she has an energy that I think, if you talk to anybody in town, you'll get to hear about. And an ownership of this program that I can see is going to build a big future for the program. I truly can't say enough about Mrs. Ferretti sitting here to my left, and I know she'd get embarrassed if I went on and on, but truly, I need to, because the feedback that I heard right away with this particular change was stunning. As you can imagine, I'm used to hearing a whole host of things from the community when they're happy, when they're not happy, and I've yet to hear negative feedback on Mrs. Ferretti. I've had parents come up to me, had parents hug me because they're so excited about these changes. I have parents who are sitting employees who've gone out of their way to tell me what the impact of Mrs. Ferretti has meant to the program. So I feel really confident in this particular role. I've worked alongside her, I've seen the hours she puts in, the individualization and the drive to improve the program. So I feel like we're really lucky with that particular facet. We saw immediate improvement. We had staffing that, for the first time, we had too many applicants, not too little applicants. And we had parent and student satisfaction. So this year, we instituted some more changes. I designated a special education coordinator, in this case, it was Ms. Laura Mansfield from the Berkland, to assist in the planning and preparation of this program over a year-long calendar. And she was instrumental in kind of breaking down each facet of this program, right down to the groupings, who were we putting kids with, who was teaching, who were we using for ESPs. And by breaking it into smaller parts, it allowed us to really kind of dissect what we were doing. It led to a major overhaul of all the paperwork associated with the ESY program. We'd experienced some cumbersome paperwork, registration, we weren't getting emergency contacts, that sort of thing. So by spending some time reviewing that, it's been much more streamlined. Paperwork's been returned and we feel more confident that we're ensuring the utmost in safety with our most precious assets. We also reviewed and updated our peer model process. So we run this program for special ed students, but we also provide model peers, so that kids can model or have models of what we're hoping to see. These are current students here in our district and they attend. And by taking a closer look at what exactly are we looking for in a model student and talking to our staff about it, it brought us to greater clarity and I think a higher quality of a peer model. And then I, alongside with Ms. Mansfield, reviewed and changed the student intern process. We've long used our students, but I wasn't totally clear on what it was we were doing. So what we're doing now is that we're looking at upper-class high school students right here in Middleborough. And we are able to kind of hire them to help in the classroom. This gives kids, in some examples, their first taste of education. And most of the applicants we took want to become teachers. So one, it's a great cost-saving mechanism to use some of our help. And for another, it exposes our kids to service to others and employment. So I'm gonna let Mrs. Ferretti talk about one particular student. If you don't talk about him, I will come back and talk about him.
Oh, yes.
But we had one particularly successful story about a sitting student who had struggles of his own in the last two years. And honestly, it's like hard to talk about it without tearing up because he was a model student intern. His attendance was fantastic. His rapport with the students was so good that when he left, we had students that were sad. And to see that growth in that student and give that gift of service to others is something that it's very hard to quantify. You kind of have to just see it. So I'll let Tricia talk about that in a minute. As a result, and unsurprisingly, the resumes came pouring in, this year, we actually have now a competitive pool for who we're gonna hire for this program. And we had to turn a lot of people away. And what that's doing is elevating the quality of what we're able to provide to our kids. It's exactly how it should be running. We also had the addition of an office support staff, and I'll let Tricia talk about this. But what that meant is that for the first time, the coordinator didn't have to spend an inordinate amount of time answering the door and answering the telephone and doing, you know, more, you know, kind of front office work. She was able to be in the programs and really give that in-the-moment feedback to staff. I actually had sitting administrators who had popped through to kind of see, call me and tell me that they saw such instructional leadership, they couldn't believe what they were seeing, and did she want to work full-time in the administrative role?
Oh.
So, yeah. It was funny. It was kind of funny. And of course, I said no because she's a fabulous pre-K teacher. The other thing we did was we opened up the high school schedule. We have high school students and post-grad students that participate in this program. And as you know, I've come from this phenomenon of secondary education in my previous role here in the district. And I just didn't feel like it was appropriate for these kids to be sitting in a classroom four days a week, when I know that what they're doing at the high school is extremely dynamic. So we parroted kind of some of that schedule. These kids have access to Wellspring Farms, which is a partnership that we have for, it's ultimately horse therapy. We have kids that go and ride and we have kids that go and work. So it's a vocational opportunity as well as a therapeutic opportunity. They actually opened up the Y to a small percentage of our students this year. So these are students who accessed the Y during the school year and they were able to do it again during ESY. Thank you to the YMCA for that, they're very generous with us. And the vocational volunteer experiences, we expanded to the School on Wheels of Massachusetts in East Bridgewater. Our kids got to go and help others. The School on Wheels is a nonprofit, I encourage you to look up and read about. They help students touched by homelessness. They have a backpack program, they have a tutoring program, that's all free. They offer that tutoring at the Conway House here in Middleborough. They're always looking for tutors, if anybody's interested. But to have our kids be able to give back at this point in their career doesn't just teach them vocational skills, but it teaches them how to be good citizens, which is completely in line with, you know, our strategic plan for continuous improvement and our mission as an organization. They also engage in the community-based field trips, like the fire department, that sort of thing, that we'd lost when we moved to the Nichols. Because every time you run a bus, there is an additional cost and there's still people driving that bus and maintenance of that bus. So we were able to do some more of that through this program. So I'll turn it over to Tricia, but I'll just talk briefly about some of the markers of success that I saw. I had coordinators present periodically throughout the year-round special ed coordinators, so they could check in. And the feedback I got was just overwhelmingly positive. I've yet to hear negative feedback from these changes. So I'm really proud of that. I was there for opening day and I've been at opening day every year and I have to tell you, it always kind of stresses me out because there's a lot of new things happening all at once. And this year, I wasn't stressed at all. It ran like a well-oiled machine. It looked like we'd been doing it for weeks. And on day one, that's not a small feat when you have all these small children and they all have to get to a new place with oftentimes new faces. The teacher preparedness, you could feel, I met with the teachers before. Ms. Tricia had homemade Play-Doh for every single teacher in their little welcome packet with their supplies. I could see that they were confident and ready and that translates to our kids. That consistency, that, and for nothing, I knew most of the faces, because we selected sitting teachers. So not only are we bringing that consistency, but when you're bringing confident instruction, you're not worrying about that. In the first days of the program, you're learning right off the bat. The student response was really positive, the attendance is going up for students in the program. And the parent feedback has just been truly something I didn't expect. And I'm excited for this to continue and with that, I'll let Tricia tell you a little bit about some of the things that they did together.
Hi, welcome. I will, I will be brief, because Carolyn has talked a good amount of the program. No, that was good, that was good. Just, you know, just so you know, at the MECC this summer, there were 70 students who, from age three to 22, and those were our full program. And that's what Carolyn talked about. You know, they are more of our most involved kids throughout the district. And we had about 35 tutor students. So throughout the day, we had probably 30 to 40 staff members, you know, our program, full program and our tutor students. I think one of the highlights for me for the summer was, because when kids have to go to school in the summer, sometimes it's hard, if it's not like, oh, I'm going to a camp for the summer. There was such joy and such pleasure for them coming to school every single day. Carolyn talked about the attendance. Every single day, they're like, I will see you tomorrow, I will see you tomorrow. And we had all of our kids, because I'm at the Early Childhood Center, I'm only with pre-K and K. So I got to have three to 22. And my favorite times was in the cafeteria at lunchtime. And you're just watching this little community of, from our district that I've grown to love, you know, I'll be 11 years this September. And they're all interacting with each other. You have the high schoolers showing the kindergarten or something on their tablet and just the friendships that they're making from the peer models. So that was just, I think, for anyone, you know, you want your kids in your community, especially who are struggling maybe a little bit more, to love what they're doing and to have a great summer. I do think it's very important, Carolyn talked about the academics. I am very strong on the academics, however, my philosophy in my classroom and even in the program is the social-emotional well-being is as important as the academics. Because we all have to get along and if we don't get along, then, you know, your academics can only do so much. So I think for me, that's always just kind of how I run my classroom and how I run, how I kind of ran the building. So it was definitely different being the leader, the boss lady, as some of them would joke, over the summer. But it was a job that I thoroughly, thoroughly took on. I, I don't even know what else to say. Oh, the intern. So, one thing I talked to Carolyn about was our high school interns coming in. And because I was there last year, I was able to kind of see some new returning ones. And we did have one who was new this year. And I spent every day kind of going through all the classrooms. And on the first day, the student was telling, you know, the students that he himself has been on an ed plan and for most of his life. So he could kind of, he was trying to kind of build that connection. He was a little insecure, but he kind of, the relationship that was built, that I saw every single day arrived almost an hour early. And I finally said, well, you know, it doesn't start till nine o'clock, honey, you don't have to come. And he's like, nope. So every single day, he was there. Finally, I got him to 8:15. But he was up there, ready to go. And he did have to leave a few days early for a family vacation. And he was very emotional having to leave. And one of, he was in a middle school program. And there's a lot of emotions that go with our middle school programs. You know, one of the students was very upset, wasn't getting on the bus, we had a little issue. And I kind of get on the bus and I'm like, you know, are you okay? What's going on? He's like, I'm fine, I'm fine. And I was looking and I was talking to his teacher, his intern left. And that, it kind of showed the importance that they're all just bridging together. And I think just being able to be the coordinator, I told Carolyn, I'm already writing my letter of intent for next year. So, so that's it. I just want to be brief, but it's an amazing program. I'm honored that I get to be a part of it and work alongside Carolyn.
Well, please come. I mean, next summer, we do have an open house, but come, if you'd like to come at any point.
It's a great time.
It really is, it's a fun summer.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Oakley?
Hi, thank you very much. Sounds like a really awesome program. I was wondering if you could explain to me briefly, I guess, how you, well, how many times a year do you evaluate for kids that need to be in this program? And how do you end up approaching them about it? How does that whole process work?
Oh, the actual students?
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, it happens at the team meeting, for starters. So students who are 14 or older ideally are sitting at the table. Once you get to that age, you're part of the team process and it's always been my And it's always been my philosophy and our department's philosophy that we want our kids as involved as possible because it does not work to plan for young adults in a vacuum and then tell them how it's going to be. They have to be there. In terms of how often do we solicit the data? The September data can be very difficult because oftentimes, it's a new teacher. So, you're not, you're not going to have that background knowledge of the learner. But what they do is they look at, like, summer assignments, for example, and how they're, these kids are approaching the curriculum. So, what they're looking for is kind of who's lagging behind and how long does it take them to catch up? So, that data point in September is a rather soft data point. Come January, it becomes a hard data point because now you've had the learners in front of you, and you administer an assessment upon return, and you're trying to solicit, okay, where are you on that? And how long is it taking you to recoup? So, that happens in January, and then it happens again in February after the February break. So, in terms of what particular assessments are used, it's going to differ level to level. It also depends on what you're looking at. For some kids, as I said, because for some kids, it could be discreet, like how they're performing in written language or reading or math. But for other kids, it's how they emotionally tackle that return. And if you look at behavior data and some of those graphs and when behavior spikes, you'll see that for some kids, that break is very, very difficult, and their behavior will actually spike before and after. So, we'd look at behavior data as another, as another point. That's then discussed at the team meeting, and it can't happen until the parent accepts the I E P. So, for 14 and older, those kids are hopefully at the table. And for anybody who's either not at the table or 14 and older and not at the table, we're having conversations with them through our counseling department or their special education teacher or their special education contact person. Typically, their special education teacher. But we are big fans of not sort of pushing kids into it. So, we, every now and again, will, and, and there are kids where you offer it, and the family, for whatever reason, will not accept that. It's up, it's up to them. You know, it's a consent-driven process. So, we have that kid say, I don't want to. In fact, one of the kids we stepped down this year that I'm thinking of, we changed, he was a full-program student that we moved to the tutoring track because he genuinely struggled with the concept of why he had to be in school for another six weeks when everybody else didn't. So, this year, you know, we, I had talked to his team early this year because we had that data from last summer. And we approached the family about doing tutoring, and he was really happy to be there.
Yeah, it was great. He came on his bike, and that was like building the independence through the family. He would arrive on his bike, you know, hey, can I talk with you? Nope. I'm like, okay. Really wasn't in the mood. He waited for his tutoring and did it, and
And left when he was done.
It was independent and went home. So, yeah.
So, does that answer your question in terms of?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Great.
Other questions? We appreciate it. I know from discussions in the past, we've had, like you just said, certain parents or children who made the decision not to come for the summer. But it sounds like as you expand this program and do different things, it sort of changes its focus, and maybe kids will think of it more like a camp, if you will, than, than a going to school for six weeks starting the summer.
Right, right.
So, I think that's good.
I think it's, the emotion these ladies have for this program is palpable, and I think it's, it's certainly admirable. So, thank you both very much for the work you do in the summer.
Thank you.
And there's a lot of teachers that don't work in the summer. So, Trish, for you to volunteer to work, not volunteer, but to work in the summer.
Yeah, no, definitely, definitely.
And put all the work into it, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
And to the committee, to continue with my report, continue with the theme, I'd invite Ryan Silvia, our athletic director, up to the, to the table to discuss the program that he started this year. We just heard about a couple of programs that have been placed for a lot of years, some of them changing, obviously, through, through the time. And with Ryan, he has a summer athletic program that he just started this year that he'd like to just talk about, you know, trials and tribulations and the successes and the things he plans on improving for next year. So, welcome, Mr. Silvia.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. Thanks for inviting me tonight, and also thank you to the school committee for having me here. A lot of action this summer. Good to hear everything that's going on. But we had a lot of action in the athletic department as well. We started, I shouldn't say, we had a somewhat existing program. We had a strength and conditioning program and a basketball clinic that had run last year, probably around 75 students total that participated in that, mostly middle school and the basketball clinic with some youth, and then some high school students in the, in the strength and conditioning clinic. This year, we expanded. We offered 16 different clinics throughout the entire eight weeks of the summer. Out of those 16, 11 of them ran. We had 211 participants within the district, mostly at the middle school level. About 65 high school students that participated in the strength and conditioning, or what we call it sport performance training at the, at the high school gym. And a small number of elementary school students going all the way down to grade three in some youth basketball. We also offered swimming and diving. So, I won't go through every single clinic that we offered, but there were nine different activities. Some of the clinics repeated. Track and field ran twice. Basketball ran twice. So, overall, it was, it was a really successful program. All the clinics, if you remember when I proposed it back in, I think, early spring, were led by the head coaches of our high school teams. And that was in an effort to expose the younger students in Middleborough to our high school coaches and their expertise and, you know, with the hope that they, they look forward to competing on those teams in the future. Another aspect of the program was that we had high school students working towards their community service hours that they're now required for graduation. So, we had a number of high school students volunteer as kind of assistant coaches, volunteer their time to help out, especially with the larger clinics. The basketball clinic was probably the biggest one with about 45 students. Sorry, got a little fly here.
Been around all night, though.
Yeah, he's been, he's been bugging me. I guess I spent, yeah. So, that was, that was a real positive aspect of the, of the, of the summer program, was having high school students volunteer their time there. That's basically the gist of it. I mean, I, I could go into a lot of detail. I don't want to take too much time, but maybe kind of answer some questions. I will show you the, every student that's in the clinic got this nice Middleborough Sachems T-shirt, and that was, that was part of the registration fee. And next year, just, I'll, I'll kind of touch on actually the clinics. I said we offered 16, and only 11 ran. That was mostly due to combining clinics. So, for examples, swimming and diving had three different weeks where they were going to offer three sections, and we could kind of combine the students who'd signed up into one section because we didn't have the numbers to justify three weeks of swimming and diving. Same thing happened with wrestling, which unfortunately, that one got canceled. Our football clinic, we had set our date ahead of time, and then unknowingly, on the same week that the parks department was running a football clinic that they've been doing for years. So, we, we kind of, you know, decided to cancel ours because we didn't want to make any conflicts for the Mitchell Memorial Club football players who usually participate in that, that parks department clinic. So, and then one more combination of track and field. They, they had offered three different weeks, and only two out of the three ran. So, I think going forward, we, I'd like to continue to expand the clinic, the clinic listing to whatever head coaches are interested in offering. And all the registration was done the same way our athletics registration is done, through family ID and payment through Unibank.
If I might, Mr. Chair, Mr. Silvia, in terms of feedback from participants and from parents, what have you heard? Was it positive? Was it generally positive?
Yeah, in general, I think the fact that we're offering so many different, you know, wide variety of opportunities was, that was the most positive feedback I got. So, you had students who could participate in a basketball clinic, and they could participate in a lacrosse clinic. In some cases, they could come in the morning for, say, basketball and come in the, and I'm just throwing different sports out there. But one sport in the morning and another sport in the afternoon with only a small gap in between, and we had coverage for coaches there. So, kind of a, a long-term vision would be the possibility of the more, the more sports and activities that we offer, you could potentially send your, your son or daughter to camp at the high school for the day. You know, the, the three-hour clinics in the morning and three-hour clinics in the afternoon with some coverage after packing a snack and a lunch and things like that. So.
Chair? Mr. Silvia just touched upon was what you've always talked about, we've talked about, is opening this building up year-round at night. With things going on, this just has to be one aspect of it. I just looked at my son who went through the conditioning program, and he was shaking his head. He, he loved the program, so that's a good thing. And it was very reasonably priced, too, for what you got out of it. It was very reasonably priced. And I think that the community can appreciate that, too. It wasn't something that was priced way out of whack. Eighty-five?
Yeah, it was, it's basically 12 hours of instruction, four days for the clinic, three hours a day, and $85 was the cost. And probably also important to just identify that any, any profit that we did make from running those clinics goes right directly back into the revolving account that, you know, basically supports the full athletic program, whether it be equipment, uniforms, all that type of stuff, just the same as a user fee that you might pay to participate.
We should also add, Ryan, too, that this year, for the first year, we're going to extend strength and conditioning throughout the school year, too.
Correct.
Because you're going to have a strength and conditioning person there essentially after school all year round.
Right. And the, the plan, which we're still working out the details on that, is to have someone in place after school for the fall, winter, and spring season. So, those student athletes that are not in season have a place to train at the school. So, maybe they can take the late bus if they need to, or they don't have to go over to the YMCA or go over to a private gym. It's right there for them.
And Mr. Chair, Ryan Silvia and Sean Siciliano have also been working on taking over the programs, which he had talked about before, and he might want to, I know you have a couple of their
Yeah, we have, I, we, I, we have three fundraiser-type things going on, all from different entities, which is pretty cool, happening at the same time in the fall. I have a couple of programs that Sean Siciliano helped us create. He did the majority of the design on these. But this is the spring program, and this is the winter program. This year, the inside will actually be full color. It has pictures of every team from the, from the season. We don't have to flip through them all. Sean did a really nice job designing these. And what we do is, we, we send a letter out to all the area businesses in, in Middleborough and some of the surrounding towns with an opportunity to advertise in our sports program. And these, these actually become almost like a yearbook or a keepsake. And that's kind of how we try to describe it to the businesses, is these don't get thrown away because they're pictures of, you know, people's children and their, their memories. And also, they get, they get handed out at all of our athletic events, especially the big, you know, the, the football games, the basketball games, the big spectator sports. But we do make sure we get them out to all the parents. And then we send one to every business that, that advertises with us. And it's been a, it's helped put some money in the revolving account, and it also is a nice, a nice keepsake for students and parents. So, that is, that's a fundraising effort that has a lot of different benefits, but it's done just through, just through the athletic department. It's not a Masba fundraiser. It's not a ice hockey group fundraiser. So, we have that going on right now. And the plug right now, I guess, if anybody who's watching is, the deadline is, is approaching on sending in those ads to, to be part of the, the sports program. So, any local businesses who are interested, all they have to do is contact me, send me an email to the Middleborough email, rsilvia@middleborough.k12.m a.us, and it's on the athletics website as well. So, they can contact me that way if they're interested in advertising with us. So, that's through the athletic department. We also have the MIG, Middleborough Ice Hockey Group Golf Tournament coming up, which is an organization that, that works directly with helping out, helping mainly pay for the ice time for our hockey program because it's such a large expense, but also helping with other expenses around the program. And that is October
Seventh.
Seventh, October seventh. And that information is on the website as well. If you scroll down, there's a number of different icons on the athletics webpage, and one of them is the Middleboro, Middleborough Ice Hockey Group website. And that's where you can get the information to register for the tournament. And then lastly, we have our Masba fundraiser going on, the Middleborough All Sports Boosters Association, which just kicked off for everybody but football today. Football's been doing it for a week. And I'll show, I know Mr. Giovanni has, has his card already from Paul. But this is a, a discount card that has 40 area businesses, some in Middleborough, some from surrounding communities. I'm sorry, there's actually 45 discounts here that if you purchase the card for $20, then you can use it at all these different businesses and receive whatever discount is printed on the card, and it's good for the entire year. Probably the most attractive part of the card is the, there's a small key tag that you, that you rip off on the side with the Middleborough logo, and it's called the Athletic Pass. And it gets you into all Middleborough High School home athletic events that we charge a gate for. So, football, mainly football and basketball. And so, it's a $20 card. If you go to five home games, it's $5, or four home games, it's $5 to get in. It pays for itself just, just there. So, a little way to kind of boost, maybe, maybe boost some community support and also raise some money for the athletic program. And the goal, no, no, no fundraising effort is mandatory, but the goal is for every fall athlete to sell five of these. And, and we're doing a Blitz, what's called a Blitz Day on Saturday, September 8th, where we'll do a collection, and then we'll send all the kids out instead of practice for a couple of hours around town, maybe stand outside Hannafords or whatever it might be, and try to do one last push effort and, and see what, see how we do.
Ryan, since I don't know what time you'll be back again, but could you talk a little about, we had a conversation, you're making a little bit of a change to homecoming. Can you tell everybody what homecoming is going to look like, the games leading up to homecoming and everything like that?
Sure. Mr. Brannigan and I are still working on the finer details, but basically, the homecoming game is going to be a night game, Friday night game. And we have that spirit week that leads up to that Friday night game. So, some of the sports, some of the teams will play their, their homecoming game, if you will, leading up to that Friday night. And then also, some of the teams will play on Saturday afternoon and Saturday morning after the football game, but before the dance. So, probably the, the biggest change is that on Saturday, we'll have kind of, we're planning not a field day, but kind of a spirit day where we have a field hockey game, a boy soccer game, a girl soccer game, all going on at once. And then obviously, the subvarsity games that follow. So, it'll take up most of the day leading up to the dance. We're going to try to do something with the food service with concession and offering hamburgers and hot dogs and things like that. So, that it's really, homecoming is not just all about one, one game on a, on a Saturday. It's, it's all of the student athletes in the program. Cross-country, I think, is on the Wednesday. So, they're, they're kind of one of the first ones.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Ryan, we, we appreciate it. I mean, you stepped in this role last year and sort of took over, so we appreciate what you've done. We should also add that I believe for the first time in a long time, the athletic department came back in the black this past year, meaning that there was, there was a little money, a little surplus of funds, which is always good for us. But as far as I've been on the board, that's never happened, and I'm sure Brian has the same piece. So, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my goals. And part of it was the sports program that we offered for all three seasons, so that was a big help. And kind of having a real tight, tight budget the first year, just, and, and Masba, the All Sport Booster Association is really kind of grateful for that, too, because they have a, a healthy budget. And to me, that's, the idea is we want to raise as much money as we can. So, when a program needs something, a team needs something, a coach asks for something, we can say yes.
And Mr. Chair, what's happened in the past, as you know, is that the, the athletic department has used up its funds, and at the end of the year, the Masba would send us a check for $10,000 or $12,000 to balance the books. Now, it's a different philosophy with Mr. Silvia. He's doing the things he needs to do to keep the books balanced, and then when he needs something from Masba, they're more than willing to, to, to help out with, with programs. They still run the Hall of Fame, which is coming up the Saturday before Thanksgiving. I think they already have their slate of, of new inductees. But it is a, is an, it is an active group, and we probably should have them here at some point. And the MIG group also, I talked to the MIG group to see if they could send a rep tonight to talk about the upcoming golf tournament, but they have their own meeting tonight about that golf tournament. So, they could not make it here tonight, so.
I think Masba, they've, they've been doing this mattress sale. Are they going to continue with that in, in the February range or January?
Yeah, so, so what I kind of proposed to Masba, and they've, they've accepted, is Yeah. So, so what I kind of proposed to Masba, and they've, they've accepted, is a major fundraiser in every season. And the mattress one seems to do a pretty good job. I think last year we raised close to eight thousand dollars in, in a one, in one day. So it's, it's a pretty, uh, and, and the company that we deal with does, you know, a nice job of dealing with most of the, uh, the heavy lifting there. So the gold card will be the, will be the fall fundraiser. The mattress sale will be the, uh, winter fundraiser. We have the golf tournament in the spring, but we may explore something that is, gets the students involved a little bit more in the spring. So we kind of have a, a student fundraiser in the fall, winter, and spring, um, to really get the coaches involved. And while, while we're on the topic of it, I just want to, uh, point out that, um, I'm trying to make an effort to make our meeting, our Masba meetings, uh, more inviting, more public. So our meetings are going to be held every, um, not that they weren't before. They were always held in the cafeteria, and we always posted the date. But we're trying to set our schedule and really stick to it as best we can, which will be the, the second Wednesday of every month. So we'll get that posted up on the website. I know it's posted on the Masba website already. And the idea is any parent, um, who has student athletes or students in the Middleborough Public Schools is welcome to attend and, and, you know, and try to understand exactly what we're doing from a fundraising perspective. And, and, uh, the Masba board is completely open to that and inviting of everybody. So, um, you know, we're all there for the same reason, which is try to raise money for, for the student athletes.
And one more thing we should mention is the store is open currently for people on the athletic website, for people to buy merchandise, um, to go to games and sort of spirit merchandise. And we should also point out that that's essentially the only place you can get Satchem merchandise that we get a benefit for. So if you see Middleborough Satchem someplace else and that's not coming to us, the, the program, this, the store that's on the athletic website is that program.
Correct. And the athletic, what, that, that store does close. It's a, it's a one, it's a one-time order per season.
Yep.
We don't keep an inventory. Uh, Mas, Masba does have an inventory at the football games of, you know, some items, t-shirts, sweatshirts, hats. But, uh, to be able to order a specific size and a specific, uh, item that we don't carry an inventory of, it's through that store. And the items are priced pretty reasonably. Um, they're not marked up to make any kind of major profit. Any profit we do make goes into the revolving account, uh, right back to the student athletes. So.
That's great.
So, thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Appreciate your comment.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate the updates. The summer updates, uh, conclude, and then we move on to some employment, employment status updates. And I'd like to announce some new hires. And it, Kiara Allen is an ESP for John T. Nichols Middle School. Patrick Converse, who was a music teacher at the Nichols last year and a fill-in for a year, has agreed to, uh, join us as the Point Three Four Music Teacher at Middleborough High School. Jaclyn DiMarco, sped teacher at HBB. Edward Finch, health teacher at Nichols Middle School. I'm going to skip over number five for right now. Then Joe Posey, ESP, Middleborough High School, high school MHS grad. Josh Poehler, another MHS grad, ESP at John T. Nichols Middle School. Megan Riley, ESL language teacher. Very fortunate to get Megan. We were a little bit late in the season with the process, and, uh, she was a real find. Looking forward to working with her. Courtney Setcher, kindergarten teacher, Memorial Early Childhood Center. I know that Mrs. Latenda went through that process. Looked through a number of applications, could be over a hundred applications. And, uh, I think we have a good one there, a great one there. Joanne Smith, coordinator of transportation. She took Michelle Ward's place. And, uh, she's working out. She's working on the bus routes, uh, finished the bus routes for the fall. And has, I think they've already bid, the drivers have already bid those, and, uh, that's all set. And then Amy Waller, Amy Waller was a school psychologist, Middleborough High School. She was, interestingly enough, she was a, one of the two finalists for the Nichols Middle School back in June. And we were fortunate that she was still available. Uh, and we had a late resignation from the high school school psychologist, just a couple of weeks ago. So we threw Kate Santos, and she's moving on. Uh, we have some folks moving on. Carolyn Harrington, Mary Kay Good School. Ethan Lobenstein, uh, picked up a job in Drake it as a full-time music teacher. I know he's going to be missed at the high school. Aaron Maher, Cafe Recess Monitor at Mary Kay Good. Uh, and again, Kate Santos from the high school. So, um, we lost some people, but we gained some really good people also. Now, going back to number five, I'd like to invite down to the microphone, Mrs. Heidi J. Latenda. Heidi is our new principal at the Early Childhood Center. You heard last meeting about the process that we went through to find Heidi. And when I sent out my letter to faculty for this, beginning of this year, the faculty packet, uh, I referred to Heidi as an old friend. And Heidi is an old friend. I first, uh, met Heidi years and years ago when she did some twirling in front of the Chutter and Marching Society down South Main Street and Center Street as a younger, younger girl. And then I had the opportunity to work with her over at Bridgewater Rainham at my, uh, my old elementary school, Mitchell Elementary School. For three and a half years, she was assistant there. She moved on to another school in the district and worked there. And then, uh, when I moved on here, um, this job came up when Holly, the last day of school, came to me and, and resigned her position. And the position was advertised. And I assured Derek Swenson, the superintendent of Bridgewater Rainham, uh, that I did not recruit Mrs. Latenda. But she did apply, and she was interested in moving back home, if you will. And, uh, so she's here before you today, um, well-educated, very experienced, knowledgeable administrator, great person, and we're fortunate to have her. So Heidi, welcome.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. I appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Chairman Mr. Young and school committee members. I'm very excited to be back in Middleborough, as I was the assistant principal many years ago at the Mary Good School. I was there for five years prior to moving on, uh, to Bridgewater Rainham. And so I'm very happy to be back in my hometown, where I can get back to the community and, um, serve the students and the families of our town. I must say, I've had a great warm welcome, and I've been able to work very well with the administrative team, who have been awesome and very welcoming. And also the MECC staff so far, that, the ones I've met so far, um, have been wonderful. They've been stopping in, saying hi, offering, um, their insight, because I'm really trying to, um, gain knowledge on the daily operations of the building. Since I just started last Monday, I've kind of hit the ground running, maybe more like a sprint speed, and, uh, just trying to get everything up and running for the, in two weeks. So, um, and I must say, Trish Faretta, who was here, she was working the ESY program, and some of the children referred to her as Principal Faretta. So, and she earned that title very well for the summer program. She's definitely a hard worker and has been a great asset to me while I was getting acclimated to my, uh, new position and new role and understanding the, um, the process of how things work at MECC. So things are going well so far. I'm very excited to be here, and, um, thank you for the opportunity. And I look forward to working with all you, all of you in the years to come.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee?
I'd just say, welcome back, Heidi. You know, um, my kids went to Mary Kay Good when you were the assistant principal. I worked with you on the school council.
Yep.
At that time, and always had a fantastic relationship with you, and am very excited to have you back here in Middleborough and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very excited to be here.
Thank you very much, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
A school choice update is next on my list, and I would have, be happy to tell you that we're up to number forty-three. I think we have another applicant today. So our numbers continue to rise in the, uh, those numbers. I think Ann gave me hard cop, Ms. Gagnon gave me hard copies that I sent along to you. We'll make sure it's in the Dropbox. Did you get them? Yes, okay. So we have students from all over the area. Um, we have some employees' children. We have some children who are just looking for a, a better education here in Middleborough. So we're happy to welcome them in. Uh, as you know, when we, when I came in, we had a, a school choice policy at that time that was sort of restricted to five students in the high school, senior only. And this is quite a difference between those five and forty-three. It brings a great deal of money into the district, which can be utilized throughout the district. So, um, kind of proud of that. As we move on, hopefully those numbers will keep going higher and higher. We need to obviously balance class sizes and make sure that we're, we're within our, our parameters there. But we're looking forward to welcoming those forty-three students from other communities into the Middleborough Public School system. Some are already here, uh, and some will be brand new. And as you see at the MECC, there are five that were brought in this year. We expanded that to five, and that very quickly filled to five. And we capped that for this year at this point. And the numbers at the, at the MECC, I believe, are between nineteen and twenty, or nineteen and twenty-one. So the numbers are appropriate, especially with the additional ESP we added in each classroom there. So any questions on school choice?
I would like to point out just beforehand, too, that we have essentially used this money in the budget to fund essentially programs we didn't have.
Yes.
Um, so for example, we added the, um, we added the special, uh, ed teacher in the biology department at the high school to help with that particular piece, especially around MCAS, and that has worked wonders with that particular piece. I think we added an ESP out of this program, too, um, for the MECC. So we've really worked hard to make sure that pieces, um, were there, and we were using the money to, to add to things so that essentially kids across the district would have an opportu, have other opportunities to.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One of the things about this program that I appreciate, I've watched it go from that twelfth grade only. We looked at, then we went to just the high school. Then we expanded it down to the middle. This wasn't something that was done overnight, which is great. We, we, it was a measured way of doing it. We, we're, I've always said, as long as we're on top of the numbers, so they don't grow in a certain way, that we end up having a big class or something that could, could, could hurt us down the line because we own our students from K through twelve.
They, they are state put clause, so once we accept them, they are ours. And, and.
But, but I appreciate that. We're watching it. We're balancing things. Um, the money is a, is a nice piece of it. But it's nice that the students want to be here.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a big part of that, too. When you see that you have all these students beyond the full-day K that you don't have to pay for, which is, which is a nice thing. Um, some communities still have other issues. But, uh, there are other students even beyond that that want to be here, and their parents want them to be here, but they've got, they have to want to be here, too, or they wouldn't be here. And I think that this is a great, great way that we did a measured approach to this. And, um, I'm, I'm happy to see this because I, I started on this board seven and a half years ago saying, why are all the other schools taking our students, yet we weren't taking any back? And I did ask those questions, and I, I had some answers, but, uh, I'll keep those answers. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Oakley has a question.
Mr. Chair, um, just branching off of what Brian was talking about, um, I, I have kind of two questions. One of them, you answered for me before, and I apologize. I don't remember the answer. But, um, but before I get to that, it, do we have any indication, besides just being a great school district, of, of why some of these students come here? Are there particular programs that draw people here, or is?
We have not really done that. We have had people that, that request to stay here. The number one reason is they move out of town. They might move next door to a different town, and they want to remain here because their friends are here and their, their social group is here. So a lot of times they'll do that. Sometimes it, we'll find, we have, we're really new at the elementary level. So the research we have really at the high school, the data we have at the high school is the fact that those kids, usually are kids that want to stay here, uh, as a result of possibly a move. So that's the number one reason right now. I think the number one reason will become, or partly become, a brand-new high school that we're building, and people looking forward to that, saying, what a facility, because the facilities can be an issue when you're looking around the region, and you're looking around some different communities that have brand-new high schools, and, and brand-new facilities, and things like makerspaces and innovative innovation labs and things such as that, and robotics programs, and things that we're developing now, um, a little bit behind the eight ball. We are ahead. Our, our AP classes draw students in, the ability for any student to take any AP class they'd like to at the high school, as opposed to a restricted environment where they're saying, if you're in an honors class or above, you're the, you're the only ones that can take AP classes. So we have that sort of open enrollment, I think, which is, is, is inviting to folks. So I think there are a lot of factors. Do we have specific data on it? No. Could we provide it? I think maybe it's a good time to maybe look at those forty-three students, or if we get more, and to ask them, why have they chosen Middleborough? And, uh, but I think that's a good suggestion, that, that might be feedback that we, we solicit from those folks.
Great.
We also, I should add, too, that we've also seen a lot of staff members bring their, uh, several staff members bring their kids to, to Middleborough, too. So that's, that's one thing. So.
Absolutely.
And, and then just, uh, the second question was, um, how much money per student, um, that came in in this way?
Currently, five thousand dollars per student.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. And if a student, one of these students has any type of special needs, then there's an adjustment for that, depending on what their, what their, uh, services are, um, that re, that they require. And there are different levels of, of money allotted to different services.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, um, you said we're maxed out on the MECC, right? We, we allowed five?
We maxed out at the MECC.
Maxed out.
We are.
Were, were there additional? Did we turn away people?
We did not.
Okay.
But we had three, and we opened it up to five. We immediately filled.
Filled those, too?
So.
And are we maxed out on any level? I think we're under, was the high school twenty? I'm trying to remember.
I believe we expanded the high school to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Okay. And.
Grade-wise.
Okay.
And we said five at each grade level at Nichols, so we have fifteen Nichols, so we have some spots.
So you have plenty of room.
So we do have some spots.
All right.
And we did say five each at, at the HBB and the MKG, and we're at nine there. So that's, that's, you know, one more there, and we're maxed out unless we expand it. So.
Um, I agree with Brian. Uh, I, I think it's, I think we did this a methodical way. We, we rolled it out and expanded it. At this point, since we're now allowing at every level, have you seen any inkling of some issues that might be coming up? If we allow too many more to come in, or is there any thing that's on your radar?
The only thing on my radar would be, well, Mr. Steven, would be a class size and keeping an eye on that. Because, um, we've, we've been, unfortunately, we've been in a place where our class sizes, over the years, where we've had our population go down, we haven't, we haven't, uh, uh, we've retained most of the educators. So our class sizes have gone down as a result. Uh, and I wouldn't like to see class sizes going back up or looking to add faculty as a result of this. But it is a bit of a quid pro quo, that if we, if we add ten MECC students, we have the room to expand, so we could actually add another kindergarten if we wanted to.
Yeah.
And I would tell you that a neighboring town, Berkeley, where, where I happen to know the superintendent pretty well, uh, my brother, there were a lot of communities around that didn't have full-day K. So we instituted full-day K, and he was able to support it by the number of students from surrounding areas, Taunton mainly, who chose to go to Berkeley to go to the full-day K. So it can be a program that is a program that, okay, if and then. So if we have too many kindergarten kids that want to register, if we have twenty students that want to register, we could add another class and, and be able to afford that. So, as a district.
Okay.
I think one of the things that we have to look at, too, um, I, I think expansion is okay as long as it's done in small waves, like we talked about. Part of the reason is because we don't know, and to, in my mind, one of the biggest factors is going to be what the new high school holds. And so, uh, obviously, we see a lot of eighth graders go to other places for legitimate reasons. They go to technical school. They go to agricultural school. We really don't know if there'll be a shift to remain in Middleborough if there's a new high school. And so that's one of the things that we really have to look at in the next couple of years. And so it would be difficult to, to raise numbers very high without knowing what the, what those pieces are.
And I would tell you this, that, that, you know, I do monitor enrollments over the summer, but the, the high school, as of yesterday, was seven fifty-five, uh, which continues to go on the uptick to a, an MSBA three-formula process that said, you know, in ten years, we're only going to have six hundred and eighty students in that high school. So, um, and I know also that there are fifty-nine houses being built currently in the town, under construction. Uh, I know also that there are at least a hundred apartments being built currently, uh, and developed currently, and possibly many more. So, um, formulas are what they are. But the MSBA forces you to build a school that's expandable. So there is an area at the high school where if we have to extend it, we will. But they will only support, we convince them to go up into the seven hundreds. And then they add another fifteen percent. So the building is being, it's being built for about eight hundred students. But, um, we're a town with seventy square miles, and, uh, there's no telling, uh, what, how much of that is going to be developed. I mean, we know that there are limitations and that there are, there are places that their houses won't be built, but they seem to be finding plenty of smaller places for, to build houses. They're squeezing them in. So we'll see what happens.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This kind of dovetails into the school choice, but it's not a school choice item. We talked about technical schools and where kids go. I'd like to have a number at our next meeting of how many Bristol Plymouth students are coming back to us this year. The actual number of students coming back. And I, I have, I have had a few parents say to me they were highly disappointed in the fact that their student went there and didn't get what they wanted to be involved with. And it's not an uncommon problem at Bristol Plymouth. Some people go, they love it, they get what they want. But if they don't get their choice of programming there, why should they have even gone in the first place? And I want to say off the top of my head, it's like twenty-six thousand dollars a year for us to send a student over there. From the, the cost of town, twenty-six thousand per student for, we spent fourteen, um, on average. And I always, I always, we always say, why do they choose? Why? And I'm not saying, there's, there's great programs over there, tremendous programs. I've even said, parents, you need to send your child there if that's what they want to do and, and whether it's a, an electrician program or something. But see the numbers coming back is what I'd like to know, is how many we send, how many come back. And when we talk about the why, the why do they come back? Because unfortunately, I, to start a program then make a switch because of just one reason, I'd really love to know.
Numbers we can certainly look at.
If you wouldn't mind, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Just, just for a conversation, which I think is important. I, I agree with everything Brian said and I also agree with what Rich said about the idea of looking at why people are coming here. I also think the inverse is important too. We don't really look, we don't really survey our parents for eighth graders who go someplace else as to why they're going someplace else. We make assumptions, like you said, Brian, we make an assumption if a kid goes to BI, they're going to BI because they want a technical education, but, but we don't know that to be true. And so I think that maybe this year we should really start to have that conversation because I would like to see, you know, what the next couple of years hold when people go out and then what those responses are when we have a new high school. So I think that, I, I think it's the, the other piece too, so I think we need to look at that too, so I think that's important.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Rotary Rays was next on mine and then finally on my report was just sort of a summary tour that we're going to do tomorrow morning at 10:00, if any of you folks can make it, to take a walk through. We're going to meet at the Henry B. Berkland front lobby at 10:00 AM to take a walk through, drive through the school system and with Mr. Hutchinson. And you can bring the babies, sure. But we're going to just take a walk through and take a look at some of those projects that he listed when he was here the last time about the projects they're doing and, and such. So that's tomorrow morning at 10:00 at the Berkland if you can make it. Lighting project, I believe, is almost complete. They're right down to MKG and I think that he's really trying to, they have disappeared for a little bit, but I think he's trying to get them to come in and finish up. So we'll hear a little bit more about that tomorrow. So, and if you can't make it, I will certainly send it out in the Friday Flash, that update, so. And that concludes my report for the evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. For MSBA update, we, to be honest with you, I don't think we've had a meeting since our last meeting because we completed the 60 cent percent submission and we figured out that we didn't need a working group meeting, I know. And there was a meeting yesterday?
I attended that meeting. There was a meeting yesterday on the, with the Middleborough Gas and Electric and the engineer for DRA and the OPM who are looking at the solar arrays for the roof and trying to make arrangements for the bid process that the GNE will have to go through and the timing of that. And the questions around the general contractor, whether or not the general contractor will allow us, allow the GNE to be on that roof in the middle of their construction? Or will it be a sort of post-construction? Well, is that something they'll do in the following? We would wire it for them and, and the following summer after the school is opened, then that would be something they might go up there. But it's all timing and trying to work out the timing. It's been done at other schools. The engineer who is, is familiar with the process spoke a great deal about the timing and the issues around timing. Also spoke a great deal with concerns from the GNE about how they're held down. The GNE, I think initially would say that they would prefer that they be fastened to the roof because of the issues with wind, high winds, et cetera. And prevailing, I believe the figure was 98% of all the, the programs on roofs, the, are done with ballasts and waiting and they're done for extreme storms, extreme weather. So there was some discussion back and forth, but it was a productive meeting. GNE has agreed to partner with us on this, which is great. There'll be a learning station in the school where the students can monitor it through science classes, et cetera. There'll be a grant that we apply for and help pay for it, which will require us to have some type of educational component in the school. And I'll tell you, if it's in the middle of a cafeteria, if I'm a high school kid, I, I'd be interested in probably checking that daily to see what kind of energy that those photovoltaic arrays are, what are they called? PV? Go ahead, tell me, please. Photovoltaic. They're not just called what they used to be called, so. We'll be interested to see what they produce, so. Looking forward to that and that's my latest, that's the latest from the MSBA.
The one other thing I should mention about the building committee is we just finished the audit on the MEC roof.
Yes.
And I got to sign off on that, so I'm completely done with the MEC roof and hopefully we won't have to ever talk about it again. So for those who remember that being a constant conversation.
Yeah.
I've never signed so many documents before in my life, so, thank you. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda presented this evening.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. MASCE, there's just the two things up there, which is the annual conference, which is November 7th through 10th. And also chiding the course with the new members who are interested in going, they're still available and still going. We are still going to have a workshop on operating protocols. I apologize for that. This summer's been a little crazy, so we'll, we'll hopefully schedule that early in September and I will send out dates to everybody. Superintendent's goal, subcommittee.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
So we worked with Superintendent Lynch, met twice and I think came up with six goals that we all agreed on. Do you want to go through them?
Sure, yeah. I do have some hard copies here. I don't know if, I know they were placed in the Dropbox and it was a. And, and so my six goals focus on district improvement, student learning, professional practice goals. First goal is a district improvement goal, talks about student safety and security and expanding that for this year to include two school resource officers and two school safety officers who'll be in place in the school. And also have a sort of a sergeant who will be in charge of that sort of detail, if you will, in the school department. And I'll be working with the Middleborough Police and I'll be working with our dirt team and to, to make hopefully that a success and also plan on sustaining that for the future. Goal number two is a district improvement goal, is an extending the school day year goal with regard to the evaluation that we've been doing over the last couple of years on our program to extend the day, whether before, before and after school childcare with some additional components, looking to have some additional educational components involved and looking to put that in place for next year, whether we continue with the YMCA or we go to another service provider. Goal number three is my communication with the Middleborough Public School community and the, in addition to the normal communication with the Friday Flash and all the other communications that we do, to expand to include a monthly newsletter for everyone in the district, so parents, teachers, everyone in the district. And also a system where teachers could, any employee could directly contact me and ask me questions and have discussions with me directly and not necessarily have to go through the normal protocols. Most people will continue to go through normal protocols, go to a principal first or an assistant principal first or go to a bus driver first or, but there'll be an opportunity for people to directly contact me and then I can have a chat with them or a sit down with them and then process through that. Some people just sort of need that and, and that's, we're going to try to provide that. My goal number four is to collaborate, coordinate and collaborate professional development with our administrative team. A lot of that has to do with a book that was brought forward by Derek Thompson, Principal at Henry B. Berkland School, book by John Hattie and Clau, John Hattie and Klaus Zero called 10 Mind Frames for Visible Learning. And we read it as a group of administrators and we will, through the year, have presentations from each building on how that book and, and the thoughts behind that book and the research behind that book is being implemented in each of their schools and putting in a series of administrative meetings that include the larger administrative team, the administrative council, if you will. And those will be held on a regular basis also. My goal number five and six are pretty similar, but both Mr. Stevens and, and Megan agreed that we should probably really monitor the Project Lead the Way Grant and the ST Math Grant Program for their success, the level of success, the level of failure perhaps, the level of involvement and, and they're both programs. One is a supplemental program and one is an integrated program. By that I mean that the, the ST Math Program will be in addition to the elementary math program at each of the buildings. And the ST, the Lead the Way Program, Project Lead the Way will be a program that courses are being offered at the high school. So sort of different approaches with those, but both are grant programs. Both are three-year grant programs and we're going to need to have data, we're going to need to have information. So as part of my process this year, I will work with Dr. Gates and work with the principals at each of these levels to monitor these programs, monitor usage and monitor their, their feelings and success and failures of, of both of these grant programs. So those are basically a quick summary of, of all my goals that were agreed upon in the policy subcommittee and are being recommended by them tonight. Ms. Janess and Mr. Stevens, you're welcome to chime in.
Say a few things.
Absolutely.
Okay. Number one was a safety, in my mind, the safety had to be number one. You know, in the recent, with Parkland incident, the shootings, you know, adding resource officer and the safety officers, I think, were important. And the thing I would like to point out is the town, the police department, all came together to fund those positions for this coming year because it wasn't built into our budget because, you know, that happened late, late in the year last year. So the important work for us to do this year, and Mr. Lynch will certainly be working on all year, is to figure out how we're going to expand those positions in our budget. So that's an important thing. Number two, the newsletter, you know, I just, we, we felt that his communication with the school community was excellent and we wanted to expand it to everybody in the district. And the third one, the goals five and six, I felt like, I've been in teaching three years and I think the thing I see most often is these brand new programs come in, they make a big splash and everybody's excited and then they just kind of fizzle away and people don't really know what happened to them. So I think that we got two really good grants. I mean, I know people worked really hard on them and I just felt it was important to, you know, just keep the intention going so we, we really know what's happening. You know, we don't want things to just kind of, you know, fade away and not understand what happened to them. So I thought, I liked all six goals. I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Lynch, when we first initially met, had come to the table with a lot of these goals, so I just wanted to thank him for kind of brainstorming with us and coming prepared with something. But again, to kind of piggyback after, after Mr. Stevens for five and six, same thing, I've been a teacher for five years and they come in and they, they're all gung ho about this program, but everybody has to get a certain proficiency level. And if you're not meeting that, then they're pulling kids from classes and we just didn't want to see that happen. So we wanted to be really cognizant of how we were going to monitor this and that we had to monitor it somehow.
And, and Mr. Chair, through you, I've also been involved in the ST Math Program in the, in the past and sort of getting that going, getting that off the ground. And there is an expectancy from the company and from the grant that their schedule be adhered to on these grants, that you get through the program and students get through the program. Unfortunately, some other things tend to get in the way and the prioritization, it goes down, probably down on the list, if you will. And then there's pressure on the part of everyone to make sure that everybody catches up and everybody is on board. And I know I, I had a conversation with Mr. Stevens who was at the middle school science level and kids were being pulled out of his class to go down to the math lab to finish up the ST Math because they were falling behind. So we, as a group, I think, need to be carefully, be conscious of that and carefully monitor, make sure that it's a supplemental program, that we administer the program on a regular basis and that we don't compare folks to, I got in trouble a little bit as an administrator because we started putting up a graph of comparing what teachers had, what number of teachers in each class had completed a certain percentage of it and it, it became a little bit of a union issue at one point, so. The success of these programs is important to us. They haven't cost us a lot of money, they are grants, but they need to support our, what we're doing in the school system. We need to make sure that they're doing that, so. I want them to be successful. We all want them to be successful, but it takes some work. And, and that's going to go to the building level too, and these folks who work in these buildings every day know that it does, it does take some, does take some doing and it's something that's an add-on. So looking forward to, to doing that, so.
I want to thank you guys for doing this. I think all six goals are excellent. I think the three, we did a really nice job. I do want to point out a couple of things that I think are important. One, Greg, you mentioned the first goal being safety and how it affects our budget. I, I just do want to say that I did, and the superintendent knows this, the police chief and I had a lengthy conversation and it would appear that the, this year will be minimal to our budget because the chief's using funds that he has available to him to be able to do it. So I'm very thankful that that's clearly a cooperative piece between us and the police community and he's done a really nice job setting that up, so I did want people to know. The second piece is as far as goal number two, which is the after and preschool program. The superintendent and I have already sort of reached out to our worlds and had conversations with people about what's out there, those type of things. I think we're both in agreement that in order to do it right, we will probably have to set an RFP up probably early January and then make a decision by February. That way the program can sort of get into place and be ready to go again, whether it's the why or whatever program. It's all set and ready to go and it, you function obviously with this year's class to get ready for next year's class. And so I think, you know, the other piece that I think will be important to us that I really want to do too is make sure we have public involvement amongst the parents who send their children to those groups about what they want, what's working, what's not working, what needs to change or what they'd like to see changed and whether or not we can do that. So I do want to say those pieces and, so thank you. You guys did an excellent job, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jimina?
Motion to approve the superintendent's school superintendent goals for fiscal year 19.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Seeing that, anybody in the audience have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very, very much. But we will be working on policy again. It's been a busy summer. But we do have a lot of policies to essentially redo. There's been some time. You guys will see a lot of policies this year primarily because we haven't done policies in a while, so we have to update and make some changes. And obviously some of the policies that we run into are structured, we don't have positions that we did in the past so they change and so they also have to change. I put a reminder about the cable committee, that's over. We did the superintendent goals under action items. So I, I did want to put down here, Mr. Oakley and I had a conversation. Mr. Oakley is also a member of the Conservation Committee. They meet the first and third Thursdays of each month and I put down if we could change our dates to the second and fourth Thursdays of each month. Just so everyone knows, I, I went back and looked at things. The second and fourth Thursdays of each month was the way the school committee previously operated. When Ms. Franco came to the board, she had a conflict with the CPA committee. Was that right, Brad? And so they moved to the second and fourth, they moved to the first and the third. So I'm wondering if there's any objection, if no one minds, if we could move to the second and fourth.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The only other question I had was, I know there was a, a brief discussion was just if anyone had any desire to change the date. I'm not looking for the date to change to necessarily six o'clock.
Time.
Time, excuse me, time. I, I was wondering if we could do either 6:30 or 6:45. It just, the little bit sometimes helps, especially if we're doing it at that time. To be honest, in my mind, the earlier, primarily because it makes it easier. We're going to have lots of executive sessions because we have all negotiating to do. And just if people could, you know, it's easier to come rather than do one at seven or do one afterwards. So if we can get in here at 6:30 and do our executive session until seven, again. So if we can get in here at six thirty and do our executive session until seven, again, this is all up to the committee if that works for people, so I'm wondering and asking.
I have faculty meetings till five thirty.
Okay, no, that's why.
If we can maybe wait until the second meeting in September so that I know what my faculty meetings are.
Sure, that sounds, that's part of it.
And I can let you know then.
If you were talking about putting the executive sessions up front and then still starting the meeting at seven, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm hoping.
I think that that would be a good idea because if you start changing the regular session.
Right.
I don't know how many people actually watch anymore, but if people are watching, they think seven o'clock's when it's always started, it's one of those things, it's kind of a cool thing. I like the idea of being able to start, whether it's six forty-five, six thirty, depending upon the type of executive session.
Right.
We can make that adjustment.
Right. So why don't we have a conversation, Megan, after your first week there to see how that goes, the first couple of weeks? And then if it's, again, I agree with Brian, I'd probably try to keep it to seven if we're not doing the executive session. My sense is, given the amount of contracts we have to do, we will be doing lots of executive sessions. And so to me, it just makes sense if we do them first and also, you know, you sort of, your brains have run out at the end of the meeting at times.
Okay, Greg.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prior to anticipated adjournment, I wanted to just point out the fact that we had, oftentimes this summer, we had classes that graduated from the old Memorial High School request to go in and do a tour of the building to see their old high school. Happened a couple of times this, this summer and the class of nineteen sixty-eight sent along a hundred dollar check for the student activity account at the Early Childhood Center with the note, this is a small token of appreciation from our class for your assistance in providing us, making the reunion tour occur. So that's just, I just wanted to note that, that they, these classes that once went to Memorial High School, this has now become sort of a feature of their reunion and it's happened a couple of times last year and it happened a couple of times this summer. So we're more than happy to accommodate those requests. So if anybody from a class up to nineteen seventy-one was the last class that graduated from that high school would like to do a tour, just let our office know and we could make those arrangements.
The Bates?
Oh, it's before that, it's, it's back to twenty-seven, the Memorial, Memorial High School.
The Bates School, is it?
Bates School, we cannot do tours, you could walk through the parking lot at the town hall, that's about it.
I have four bricks there though.
Yeah.
From that, that school.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our next meeting's going to be September thirteenth based on our new schedule.
Yeah. So next meeting will be September thirteenth. The other thing I just want to point out to everybody, as I said, a couple of things that the superintendent and I have talked about, is there are lots of people who go out of their way to help the district over and over again and we're really going to try to get them in here. For example, Chris Reedy allows kids from the high school to go down and use his archery course, so that's outstanding. And the other piece is obviously Hannaford's, time and time again, Hannaford's gives us additional money over and over in, in a variety of ways. And if we look, I mean, the checks just total up and up and up and up all the time. So although maybe not reaching a big check level, but given the amount of money they give over the course, I think we should really work. And, you know, sometimes that's, that's hard to do because corporations have different policies and things, but I'm going to try to reach out to the manager and ask if he or she would be wanting to come down. Any other questions or concerns? And the chair, we understand, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much and we'll see you September thirteenth.